Good afternoon and welcome to the Argus Foundation Meet the Minds Zoom Candidate Forum for the County Commission District 5 seat. I am Christine Robinson, Executive Director of the Argus Foundation. Meet the Minds are typically luncheons with guest speakers to talk about important issues impacting the community, state, and the world. We typically hold these meetings six times per year. This will be our first candidate forum for this political season, but not our last, and our first ever on Zoom. I would like to welcome our candidates and express my appreciation at their participation in this forum today. We have three candidates who are all running for one seat. This county commission seat is currently held by County Commissioner Charles Heinz, who is term limited, so it is an open seat. This is a partisan election. We have one Democrat running and two Republicans. Republicans Ron Kutsinger and Chris Hanks will face a primary on Tuesday, August 18th, before the general election. The winner of the primary will face Democrat Alice White on Tuesday, November 3rd. I thought I would go over a few things before we get started with the format of this forum. So I'm going to share a screen with you. Sarasota County Government has a constitution called the County Charter. Out of 67 counties in Florida, 20 have charters. The rest are governed strictly by Florida statutes. We have five county commissioners in Sarasota County by our charter. Each county commissioner gets elected for a four-year term, up to two terms. In 2018, there was a referendum to change the way county commission elections are conducted, and I'm going to bring up the language for that, so that way everyone can see what that language looks like. Prior to this election, candidates had to live in a certain district but were elected by the entire county, so everyone in the county got to vote on all five county commissioners, staggered every two years. Now, electors can only vote on commissioners living within their district once every four years. Redistricting occurred last year. So the county commission district seat looks like this now. So District 5, which is the one we're having the debate, the district that we're having the debate with, is highlighted in yellow. It is the southernmost district encompassing portions of Northport, Inglewood, and maybe a little slivers of South Venice here and there. So this is what the current seat looks like for County Commission District 5. Now, county commissioners have certain powers and duties and responsibilities. As you can see, Florida statute 12501 outlines some of those things. It is an extremely long statute, so they've got a lot on their plate. We also thought it would be good to see, before we get started, the priority agenda for the county commission this year. This was done at their board retreat in December of last year, which obviously was pre-COVID-19, so this may look entirely different if they addressed it today. With that out of the way, let me go over how this candidate forum will be conducted. This is a recorded forum that will be posted on our website, YouTube channel, and social media. This is the property of the Argus Foundation, and permission must be sought for the use of the video. Video should not be edited or altered from its original format. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening, which will be timed. We have some warning cards here. Yellow warning card will be shown when there's 20 seconds remaining, followed by a red card when time is up. After the opening, candidates will be asked some questions in which they will get 90 seconds to answer. Again, they will get the 20-second warning and the red card to indicate when it's over. While it does make for great political theater to ask questions of candidates on the spot without warning, in reality, all of us want our elected officials to study issues before voting and make thoughtful votes. We want to encourage that, and so to that end, we have provided the candidates a list of possible questions that we may be asking today. All the candidates were provided the list last week. We will only be asking questions from that list. After that list is through, we will turn to some questions provided from Argus Foundation members that were given to the candidates late last night. Candidates will be given 90 seconds to respond again. After questions, each candidate will get a one-minute closing. Do any of you have any questions before we begin?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, great. So let's get started. The openings are two minutes, and we're going to start in the order of Ron Kutsinger, then Chris Hanks, then Alice White. We will be changing the order throughout, so that's how we'll begin though. So first, Ron, if you can begin with your opening.
Thank you, Christine. So just thought I'd introduce myself. Allison and I moved here in 1973 from Michigan. Our first home was a little 10-by-50 mobile home in Venice Ranch Mobile Home Park, so we really grew up here together. That's where we raised our family. Our boys were all born and raised here. We started Ron's Restaurant in Inglewood in 1974, had a lot of fun with that, very successful because back then we were the only game in town. But then for the past 30 years or so, I've been a financial advisor, and I own a financial services firm here in South County, been very involved in the community. I can highlight just a couple of those things. Mentor in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Rotarian Chamber of Commerce, president of Friends of LC Cork Library for several years. I've sat on the library advisory board, and that was also a wonderful experience. And then was spokesman for the referendum to extend legacy trail. I was a member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and last year we did a lot of good work, and we presented the Board of County Commissioners with 13 recommendations. And it's good to see some of those being implemented now. And then, of course, for the past four years, I sat on the Sarasota County Planning Commission, and during that time, we did a complete update and revision to the Sarasota County Comprehensive Plan, and so my name is on that document. And then also, we did the Unified Development Code, where we merged the land development regulations with the zoning code, and that was also a great process. So I know my community. I've lived here for 50 years, and I believe I'm uniquely qualified and prepared for a seat on the county commission. Thank you, Christine, and thank you, Argus, for the opportunity.
Great, that was perfect, fit that right in within two minutes. So, moving on to Chris. Chris, you are next, you have two minutes. You're muted, Chris.
I'm unmuting. Well, I'm Chris Hanks, a current city commissioner in the city of Northport. When I decided to run for the county, it was a different time. Adults met over cocktails, students went to class, folks shook hands and expressed gratitude. We were in shopping centers buying toilet paper out of comfort, not fear. But our unions changed quite a bit, and I don't think we'll get back to the way it was. We're seeing freedom limited for public safety. We're being told that essential services are and what we can participate in and not. So what do we need from a candidate right now? How do I bring confidence as a leader of our community in this climate? And I think that there are some themes that we should cover, and I think it's something that we should all be saying. One of them is building trust. We're in a new time. We hadn't navigated single-member districts in 30 years. The coronavirus, we've never navigated, and the feds are pumping trillions into our economy and infrastructure. I mean, what took George Washington up to George Bush 225 years to spend, we've done it over a week yet. You need someone in South County that can build trust with, who understands South County and its needs, but at the same time, has broad shoulders to handle the burden that will keep all our voices collective in a single-member district climate while looking at global county priorities. We need to look at flexibility. We can no longer do things the way we always have. We need to be flexible from our government to our community organizations to our citizens. An entire national workforce is learning to work from home, and they're downsizing. It's a mobile workforce by necessity. I mean, how does that play? Bringing new businesses to our area. We've got to be forward-thinking, we've got to be flexible. And I'll tell you this, if you're being told you can work from anywhere, you might as well be working from Sarasota County. Ingenuity, what does that mean in technological environment that's being forced on us and on our seniors in schools? How does that affect our infrastructure that's lacking in broadband and connectivity? These are ways that citizens are responding. I hear it every day in my position, and I think we need to look forward. We need to be visionaries, and we need to be finding the proactive answers to the issues that aren't just in front of us today, but the issues that we have coming around the corner. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Alice, you're next, you have two minutes.
Okay. I have a sincere and enduring commitment to my community since first moving to Northport 30 years ago. I still live in the same house. I was a teacher for 36 years, 30 of them for Charlotte County Schools, but I am my son's mom. Jake was born here and owns a successful diesel repair shop in DeComis, which now has four full-time employees. Now, I bring these things up to show that I am deeply rooted in my community, and my decision to run for Sarasota County Commissioner is an earnest one. Those who know me know how passionate and dedicated I am about the need to respect our natural environment. I founded People for Trees in 1997, a nonprofit native tree advocacy group in response to the growing concern about the needless clearcutting of land for development. As a Sarasota County Commissioner, I would advocate that all development be both economically and environmentally sustainable. I was first introduced to Sarasota County in 1987 when my parents moved here, and southwest Florida seemed to be the best-kept secret in all of Florida, a paradise that was nestled between the Gulf waters, the pine flatwoods, and the oak cabinets. But I was drawn to Northport because of what I saw, the untamed real Florida. My many involvements in Northport and surrounding areas for 30 years has provided me with some great experiences to be with many people in many different circles, and it's that background that would enable me to be the voice that can speak for the people. And I believe we should always remember why we chose to live in Sarasota County and strive to keep it that way for ourselves and for generations to come. Thank you.
You all did a great job. It's in the time limit, thank you for doing that. So it's going to get a little bit more challenging as I ask my questions, because as you've seen, my questions are quite long and have multiple to them. So I know at least one of you lobbied for longer time, but unfortunately to get to the side. So thank you again. So here is my first question. So you saw on the last slide I brought up, the county commission board policy agenda for 2020. This was set by the commission at their December 29 retreat. I should probably bring it up for the audience again so that they can see it, so I will do that. So there's the board policy agenda with the top priorities, and this is what they mark as high priorities. So this was obviously pre-COVID-19, to be fair. So do you agree with this list? What do you think is the most important issue for the county, and what would you specifically do to tackle that issue? What is the most important issue for your district, and what would you do to tackle that issue? The order for this one will be Chris, then Alice, then Ron. So Chris, you're up first, and you will get 90 seconds for this answer.
Great, thank you. I would say whatever was considered a priority just a couple of weeks ago, as you mentioned, wouldn't be that today. We're facing the greatest unemployment rate in history. We need to be looking forward, not in our rearview mirrors right now. We need to be rebuilding the economy as fast as possible, and that's the single greatest policy agenda I think we have right now, and I see three pillars to do that that are historical. Tourism, sports tourism will play a major role. I've been a very vocal advocate of it, and the Braves will play a big part down here in South County. I will tell you that in construction of this, there were a ton of partners. Everyone was working together, but when it was tough on my board, it was my phone that was ringing with those partners looking for solidification leadership, and I'm proud that I was able to provide that for them. Seniors, we need to be looking at housing, hospitality, and healthcare. This will be a major role in rebuilding the economy when folks are able to get out of their houses. We must make sure that things are up and running and that they're open for business. Agriculture, we need to diversify our economy and utilize agriculture to do so. I've been working with hydroponic companies from idea to conception for years in my city, advocating for their industry, addressing zoning of our activity centers, being a voice, neighborhood gardens, changing the zoning ordinances to allow folks to share gardens in their communities, be able to sell their produce as a source of revenue. The priorities I think that we're looking at are going to be sports tourism, seniors through housing, hospitality, and healthcare, which will cover all demographics. And the one thing definitely missing that is a big South County priority would be warm mineral springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate that. Okay, so next to answer the question will be Alice.
Okay. Well, I think the most important issue right now, according to that list, is providing for our quality of life. It should be our top priority, and would start with the commission putting forth a vision for this, which I don't think this list doesn't adequately do. We should commit to improving our parks and preserves and open spaces so people will actually get out and use them, and reconnect and connect with their natural environment. And protecting our Gulf waters is another issue which needs to have top priority. Inadequate wastewater treatment facilities and the raw sewage spills into our Gulf waters needs to be addressed before bringing any more development online. Our pristine environment is what brings people to Florida. It drives our economy. I would say right now, the biggest issue for both Northport and Inglewood residents is that widening of River Road, a now woefully inadequate roadway to accommodate the growth and development that's been allowed to occur and feeds into that road. And that doesn't even include the additional 325 homes that will be coming onboard for the Beachwalk Preserve that's slated to be built along River Road. The residents of Inglewood especially rely on that road as an evacuation route, and it's been severely compromised due to new development. Our elected officials have to consider the needs of the current residents before accommodating those of the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, you're up next, and you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Christine. Well, you know, I agree with a lot that was said there. I took this question at face value. I do believe that we're going to have to revisit this list and reassess what our priorities are. I think that's going to change pretty dramatically in the face of the crisis. But given the list, I would have to say I generally agree with the focus on infrastructure. I think that's very positive because some of that's been allowed to be neglected, and so we've got a lot of work to do there. More than issue, I'm a little torn because for me, it was roads, 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 and water treatment. So that infrastructure, I think, needs taking care of because we are a coastal community. We talk about tourism and people coming here and why they want to be here. Well, obviously, we need to make sure that those things are taken care of and that they continue to draw me about. As far as the most important issue in my district, I'll tell you the feedback that I've gotten, and the feedback is we need affordable housing. We need places for these people that are working in our communities and even in the organizations and businesses. We're just having a hard time finding housing for them, so that's the feedback I've gotten about an important issue in our district. Thank you.
Great, so now we'll go to the next question. So businesses have been shut down or severely scaled back due to COVID-19. Do you believe county government has a role in jump-starting the economy when we open back up for business? Why or why not? If you do, what would you do to jump-start the economy? And the order for this will be Alice, Ron, then Chris. So Alice, you are up first.
Okay. Yes, I do believe our county government has an important role in jump-starting the economy due to the resources it has at its disposal. It would be remiss of them not to do anything. And I learned that commissioners recently voted to have the Economic Development Corp, or the EDC, use that $4.3 million that's been sitting in the Economic Development Incentive Fund to administer small business loans. And this is great. We need to take care of the people who came here and struggled to get established and are now struggling to stay afloat. But the county could also maximize the valuable resources that they have readily available, like our beaches and parks, such as hosting festivals once this is over to get people back out there, maybe something like a Taste of Sarasota County, maybe at Robarts Arena, where the fair was supposed to be, that would showcase restaurants from all over the county so they can promote and sell their foods while promoting their restaurants to build up that customer base again. And they shouldn't have to pay a vendor fee or even an advertising fee that's associated with any of these festivals if they chose to be involved.
Okay, thank you, Alice. So next, Ron, you are up for this answer.
Thanks, Christine. So I actually did watch the county hearing yesterday, and I understand the desire to do everything we can to make sure that this economy is jump-started. Yes, I do think we have a role to play. I think I would have wanted a little more time to fully understand how that money was going to be distributed and what the guidelines were regarding that. I've lost count of how many trillions of dollars is coming out of Washington right now for businesses, and I'm wondering if we might have better focused that money on, you know, specifically here in the county, what can we do to help businesses getting restarted by maybe removing some of the burdens and some of the regulatory things that are hindrance to that, maybe reducing some costs associated with that, lowering permit fees, maybe staffing up some of the areas that are going to be flooded with permits, and, you know, just focusing on fostering an atmosphere that encourages and supports the restart of those businesses. So for me, I'd like for Sarasota County to work on making those processes faster, less expensive, and promoting that restart as quick as possible.
Thank you, Ron. So Chris, you get to wrap this one up.
All right, well, the economic effect of this is, I think, bigger than all of us. We're going to need everybody. The feds have pumped trillions, as what was stated. There's trillions more probably to come. I think we just got to get back to the three pillars of our economy: tourism, specifically sports tourism. We will need to be vested even greater. We need to put a focus on it and incentivize heavily to make it sexy for investors. I mean, I can tell you, the area we have a ton of space for this right now and should be focused on is probably South County. Seniors, we meet their needs, we meet everybody's needs. Housing, hospitality, and healthcare. Make sure these things are open immediately out of this mess. We're in a fourth recession, we need to look at short-term solutions that reap long-term benefits. They're not easy decisions, but I'm the only one here that has the experience in doing it. Look at impact fees and where we stand after this. We may need to relax more. Relax, not essentially redundant permitting, streamline it. It's something I've been adamant about in Northport, and we're night and day compared to where we work. I would love to give a tour. Anybody can give me a call, I'll set it up, we'll head down. We can talk to Frank, and I'll show you what we've been doing. I think everybody would enjoy it and be impressed. Agriculture, it's a huge aspect of our national economy. We need flexibility in a mind geared in ingenuity, looking to the future, and I think hydroponic farming is that future. Maximize crop yields of 280%, reduce land by 50%, water usage by 90%, reduce fertilizer by 25%, none of it's put back into the soil. I think that's the way to address the issues of the past while driving a direction towards the future.
You ended right on time, Chris.
Right, yes. They call me "on the money." That's what they call me, "on the money."
So let's shift gears a little bit to the topic of CRAs, which have been controversial in Sarasota County. What is your opinion of community redevelopment agencies, and how well do you think they have worked in Sarasota County? Would you program into other areas of county? If so, how many areas? And how would you make up for the lost in tax revenue to the general fund? If not, what can be done to help blighted areas of the county? So we went through one way, we're going to start going backwards this time. So the order for this will be Alice, Chris, and Ron. So Alice, you are up first.
Okay. Well, the downtown Sarasota CRA was approved back in 1986, and I think it did wonderful things to revitalize that area. I first came to Sarasota in 1990, and I remember going to the Crest Department Store on Main Street. Now, I love old historical places, but I could see that the entire area was somewhat tired-looking. I also remember going to Bayfront Park before it was revitalized, and then attending the grand opening in 1993, and those transformations were exciting. I'm also familiar with the Inglewood CRA that started in 1999 and helped to revitalize the Dearborn Street area. That action created Pioneer Park that now hosts the Inglewood Farmers Market, along with special events. I recently took part in the Lemon Bay Historical Society Cracker Festival at that park, and it was a wonderful hometown-type event put on by people that were passionate about their local history and culture. However, I read that North Sarasota, according to an article in SRQ Magazine, is considered to be the most economically depleted region of the city, but the county commissioners aren't favoring funding for a new town CRA. I don't agree with that decision. Creating vibrant areas that were once blighted means not only creating a new positive revenue stream because property values are ascending instead of descending, the cost due to calls for police, EMS, et cetera, would decrease. So I believe CRAs are a win-win.
Thank you. So next up is Chris. Chris, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, ma'am. I think in this climate, we need to be thinking out of the box to get out of the recession and push forward, as folks are going to need to get back to work. As far as CRAs, it isn't something I think too much about. We never saw benefit of it over the lost revenue as something being very appealing to our area, not to mention it kind of creates another governmental bureaucratic board, and I believe less government's a little bit better government. I do think if we're looking at this from a post-apocalyptic environment that we're looking at today, these areas are always hit harder during a recession than most. We should probably be looking more at the opportunity zones. It's a federal vehicle that creates zones that the state recognizes as economically distressed communities. Its design is to spur economic development, job creation in those communities. It's brand new, hadn't been around for very long, but what they do is they provide federal tax benefits to investors where they can defer taxes on previous gains for several years. The state of Florida has actually recognized five zones within the county, from North County as far south as Inglewood. What we should be doing probably is creating an assistance vehicle that motivates investors of these areas. We could look at incentive boosters, impact deferments, and when you combine these with federal tax benefits, I believe they could create a very appealing environment for investment. Then everybody's happy. Our general fund's growing, and revenue, and our blighted areas are all seeing new life.
Thank you. So you have the last say this time.
So I did have the wonderful privilege of working with Debbie Marks and the Inglewood CRA and the downtown district, and there has been a lot of good done that's come out of the CRA there, and will continue to be done over the coming years. So I think there's been some positives there. I'm hesitant, however, to create another layer of bureaucracy, and creating several of these all over the county would mean a lot of tax dollars being deferred, and I just think it might tie up future boards and maybe hamstring some future dollars being spent in areas where, you know, future commissions and communities decide to spend those dollars. Did I get muted? What'd you do to me, Christine? Am I there?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. I'll go back to the line where I said I would not be looking to expand the use of the CRAs, and I think if there's areas where we want to focus our attention, we prioritize that and we budget to do that. I do think there's some great opportunities, I do. I had written down the opportunity zones as well. I think that's an underused program, and we need to really do some research on that, and I think there's some exciting things to be done. I'm very much in favor of public-private partnerships, and I see these strip centers and these empty big-box stores and things like that where we need to invest with the private developers and see what we can do to incentivize growth in that area.
Great. So let's talk about property taxes for a minute. What is your opinion of the county property tax rate, and what area of the county budget do you think we spend too much on, what area too little on? And so for this one, we're going to And so for this one, we're going to start with Chris, then Ron, then Alice.
Well, again, Christine, nothing's the same today as it once was. You know, I've mentioned the trillions that have been spent. I don't think anyone can look at this and say that they know. We're in an overwhelming national crisis right now. The burden placed on our government at every level is unprecedented. I think our county, city staff, our first responders, our essential workers are doing a phenomenal job. We just can't see the toll that it's taking. So we need to be having conversations with our community partners now more than ever. We're in the business of relationships. And folks all over the country are making it happen, and a lot of them are making it happen right here. We need to be gleaning and drawing from them. They're the ones that'll be bringing our workforce back. The small business, the entrepreneur, they're the backbone and driving force right out of this recession. We need to look to organizations like Argus. Listen to the members, speak with the folks in each industry. There's years of vested interest in our area that have shown true flexibility and ingenuity through their wealth of knowledge and expertise. I would like to thank you, Christine, you're a perfect example because you're a former county commissioner, someone with vast private sector experience, supporting and advocating for partners of a county-wide community. It's folks like you that understand the flexibility and ingenuity needed in this climate. I've enjoyed the videos and the Zoom forum is brilliant. We need to get to where we can leave our houses, look at the overall condition we're in, bring in all our community partners to get us back on track to where we need to be. It's just going to take us all.
So next, we have Ron. You're up.
So there's a great site, Florida Tax Watch, and they have comparing counties. And we come in 60th out of 67 counties as far as our property tax rate. But if you look a little closer, you'll see that we're ninth in overall tax burden because of all the additional fees and taxes that we pay. So I like keeping taxes low, I'm very, very favorable about that. And that's certainly going to be a commitment of mine. I think the area that we spend too much money on is probably the public transportation, SCAT. A little factoid there. I mean, in 2013, the budget for SCAT was about $16,000. And here we are in 2018, the budget was $21 million. That's a 33% increase. So that would be the area I would really like to take a look at and see why we're spending that much money. Where we spend too little, I think, again, is this issue of infrastructure, perhaps especially in the maintenance area. But that's where I think we need to focus our energy.
So Alice, you get to end this question.
Okay. Well, as a resident taxpayer of Sarasota County for 30 years, I really haven't had any concerns with the county tax rate. We get to live every day in a paradise. But we have to provide the funds necessary to see that that paradise will be taken care of with tax dollars spent wisely to provide the maximum benefits for all the people. I don't think we've kept up with road projects, as was mentioned, such as the gap roads that would provide for better connectivity. Some of these projects, I learned, have been on the drawing board for decades. I don't think tourist tax dollars have been distributed evenly throughout the county to promote activities other than our beautiful beaches. For example, Sarasota County is quite the cycling community. You know, how about compiling and promoting a cycling calendar? Where historical site tours by bicycle in Venice and Inglewood could be put on there while noting bike rides that take place throughout the county, like the Tour de Parks, the Tour de Northport, the Sharkey's Bike Ride, Cycle Fest, and those full moon rides, which I've done, along the Legacy Trail. I'd also like to see some parkland acquisition funds and tourist tax dollars be directed more towards Northport. How about an outdoor adventure center that would showcase our beautiful pine flatwoods we have here while providing a one-of-a-kind eco-tourist destination to include the kayaking that we now can accommodate, hiking, mountain bike riding along the Mi'akahachie Creek for both visitors and residents to enjoy.
So let's move on to talk about municipalities. Give the county a grade on their relationship with the municipality. And what would you do to further improve those relationships? The order for this will be Ron, Alice, then Chris. Ron, you're first.
Okay, well, I'm hesitant to give a grade, but I think I would say this, that there's room for improvement. And I've been somewhat disappointed with, you know, past tensions and somewhat, in some cases even adversarial relationships. I think part of that has to do with personalities and other things. But that's been improving some, I hope, here in recent days. But what would I do to improve it? I would absolutely, there's three things: communicate, communicate, communicate. Need to show up, we need to listen, we need to find common ground, we need to collaborate, we need to build relationships. I think it was Shannon Staub who often said that separation creates suspicion. And I think it's just going to be really important to build strong relationships because a strong Northport, it's good for Sarasota County. A strong Venice, good for Sarasota County. So, I mean, we're in this together, we need to see these things as a team, work together on them, have a spirit of collaboration, communication. And I believe, and especially the relationships I've built with a lot of folks on these councils, that relationship will improve.
Okay. So next, we have Alice. Alice, you get to answer this question next.
Okay. I agree with Ron, there is room for improvement. And I place responsibility for maintaining a productive and cooperative relationship between the county and its municipalities squarely on our county commission. They should be presenting an overall vision for the county. And as a former teacher, I would give them a grade of D, below average and putting forth very little effort. I can't recall a single town hall meeting held for the residents to speak about their concerns. There haven't been enough joint meetings between the city commissions and the county commission. Is there even one a year? It should come as no surprise, this has resulted in people not having a better understanding of even how the role of the county fits into the workings of the municipality where they live. Here in Northport, people have asked me, how do county commission decisions even affect them? Do those decisions apply only to the unincorporated areas of the county? People weren't aware, for example, that the town indicated as their mailing address didn't necessarily constitute the place where they actually lived. Confusing, yes, because as was stated, there's been a real lack of communication between our elected officials and the people they're supposed to serve. And now that we have moved to having single-member voting districts, there should be no reason why we don't have town hall meetings at least held four times a year. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Alice. So Chris, you get to wrap this one up.
Thank you. The city of Northport and the county have had a great working relationship. And our communication together has been key. I know that Commissioner Hines, the chair of the board, last year made it a goal to come to our commission meetings each quarter and give us updates, answer questions to what was happening at the county level. I'd love to see more of that. To see as a citizen, as our county commissioners, be a little more accessible to the people that they represent. I'd like to continue an open dialogue with every district. We're in a single-member district climate, but we have to have a global county directive in governing and getting to know the folks across the county, I think, is very important. My plan would be to hold an open house in every city, every district, every It will give me the benefit to hear the issues in each area. You know, because of single-member districts, I'm Sorry, I had a notification come through, you might want to delete your notification. But anyways, would be able to govern adequately without or routed you. And unless you're putting yourself in a position to hear from folks, I think it'll be impossible to do.
Are you there? I cannot hear you, Christine.
Yeah, I did Water quality, there are many aspects to it. Septic to sewer, stormwater runoff, advanced wastewater treatment, agriculture, old infrastructure, fertilizer runoff, sewer spills, red tide. What area of water quality do you think the county should be focusing its attention on and funding on? And why? The order for this will be Ron, then Chris, then Alice. Ron, you're up first.
All right, I get to be first twice. I watched the presentation that the Gulf Coast Community Foundation made to the county commission here recently. And the great work that Steve Swah and John Thaxton and others have done on the community playbook. And they've taken a lot of data, they've done a lot of research. And, you know, they've had some very clear and unambiguous conclusions to that. And I think the playbook is really, should be one that we follow. The most important one that they identified was the wastewater, the advanced wastewater treatment that had the most impact. It was, you know, the most significant reduction of nitrogen and nutrients. So I think we need to focus on that. And as far as, you know, the other issues, the stormwater and septic to sewer, all very important. But if you're changing out septic tanks to sewer and yet your advanced, or your water treatment plan is not really taking out the nitrogen or the nutrients, that doesn't make any sense. We got to do it in the right order. So I would say that the focus should be on upgrading our plants to wastewater, advanced wastewater treatment, and then move from there. You can't do it all, but we need to do what we can.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you're up next.
I've got experience here. In Northport, we had aging lift stations, we're on the verge of failing. Irma blew through, drainage was so bad that we had millions of dollars lost through flooding. Road oils, chemicals, trash washed into our canals. I was dealing with a decade of commission maintenance management. We were understaffed, we were under-equipped, we were underfunded. When I ran, if somebody would have told me I would support an increase, I would have said they were crazy. But decisions had to be made and there was an increase. We had to invest in our community, our people, and our development. If your pops burst in your home, you're going to do what it takes to fix it at your home. No one's going to allow their septic to back up in their tub and put their kids in it to bathe. But that's what we were looking at, literally crap possibly blowing across our streets. No one's going to move to an area like that. If people aren't moving in, then businesses are not growing. We need to show pride in the place that we live. Since that investment, the county saw hundreds of thousands of gallons reported of sewage spilled. I'm proud to say we didn't have virtually any. That investment opened three foot of capacity to our waterways. Last year, one of the wettest in history, we saw zero damage and flooding. That's millions of dollars saved. Last year, 25% of chemical usage was cut. We invested in equipment that was desperately needed. Our goal by the end of this year is 50% cut. Conservatism isn't about being cheap, it's about finding value. And I see value in my community. To me, that's fiscally responsible. And by the way, we did all this, and Northport's still the lowest taxed city in the state by comparison, and still 23% below our rate in 2008.
Okay. Alice, you get to end this question. So
Wait. Am I, do you hear me? I don't hear you anymore. Okay, sorry. Yes, our most important and urgent issue should be water quality, beginning with, yes, implementing that plan to provide for the advanced wastewater treatment standards. That should be a top priority, especially given the number of spills that have been reported. From May 2018 to September 2019, there were spills of more than 630 million gallons of treated and untreated wastewater that went into our Gulf. These spills, they led to fines being proposed by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. I was hearing amounts of up to $25 million. Yet in December of 2019, there were still more sewage spills going into our Gulf. We can't continue to approve development when the proper infrastructure is just not in place to support it. I'm reminded of that old saying, that man is the only animal that dirties his own nest. We need to stop polluting the waters of our paradise and dirtying our own nest. We should be focused on better stormwater management practices, promoting and insisting on Florida-friendly landscaping for new development projects, having more ground covers and plants instead of grass lawns that require irrigation, fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, which are all, again, contributing to our water quality issues. Water is the heart and soul of Florida.
Hey. You guys are doing great staying within the time limit, thank you for that.
Yeah.
So let's move on to the Legacy Trail. So this is a more district-specific question. Do you believe that the county has kept its promises to Northport with the extension of the Legacy Trail? What would you do as a county commissioner to ensure that the Legacy Trail extension to Northport is completed expeditiously? And we're going to, the order for this will be Chris, then Alice, then Ron. So Chris, you're up first.
All I hear is redhead stepchild, the word ignored and forgotten. I wouldn't raise that way, I don't whine about things, I'm a business owner, company spread across seven states, so I just don't have time for it. I care about solutions. If we want to be in the loop, then we have to stop our poor me attitude, stop bringing folks to our level and become the standard that folks want to reach for. I mean, that's America. Winners are winners not because they complain, but because they do what it takes to get the job done. If I was county commissioner and this came before me, I would say we missed a bigger opportunity. We should have bonded the whole thing. The risk we run now with single-member districts is it putting Northport's connection in jeopardy. This is why, as a commissioner, I've been so adamant in wanting the connection started down here. You could say the political climate wasn't palpable for, but I'll assure you, it's not now. Huge opportunity missed. We could have been innovative, looked at bundled bonding where costs are driven down by package deals. We could look at Selby Gardens and Warm Mineral Springs. Use our partnerships and synergy to get these things done. The springs are owned by the city, but there's ways to do it. We need someone who's flexible in their thinking, shows ingenuity, who thinks out of the box. Not the only one that has the relationships at every level of government from the get-go to make things like this happen. I mean, the city has dedicated payback sources. The park itself is very profitable. We could have marketed our own referendum of payback, used the revenue bond at a cost savings utilizing flat fees. I mean, there's just so much that we missed. We don't want to miss anything else moving forward.
Okay. Next, Alice. I would like to hear your thoughts on this.
Okay. As far as I know, the Legacy Trail extension into Northport is in the works. The next time you drive south on 75 after River Road, you can see the trees that have been marked with the neon ribbons to indicate where the surveyors have been. We need to remember that the Legacy Trail was a rails-to-trail project laying asphalt over what was a railroad bed. And the extension into Northport, of course, is going through raw land. People have already called me concerned about the impact of the wildlife, the number of trees to be removed, and they're justified in being concerned. But it's going to get done, and it's going, but it has to be right. The county has had workshops held in Northport explaining the entire process, and I've been very appreciative of that. And I am personally excited about this project because I've been an avid cyclist since 2007 when I took part in RagBri. It's a 500-mile bike ride across Iowa. But I spent a lot of time training, traveling over our local roads, and I found out the shortcomings of those roads that didn't offer bike lanes and sidewalks that went nowhere. I chair the annual Tour de Northport bicycle ride. I consider the friends of the Legacy Trail to be in one of my circles of friends. And as a county commissioner representing a Northport district, I would certainly keep tabs on the progress of this project.
Okay. Ron, you're up next.
Well, I was fortunate to be a spokesman for the Legacy Trail referendum and got to speak to groups all the way from North County, South County, including Northport. And so I am invested in this project, it's very important to me. And for me, it's in my reputation because we made promises and those promises may need to be promises kept. So I did talk to John Robinson, just to kind of get an update as where things are. And Kim Lee Horn, you know, is doing the engineering. They reviewed the 30% plans, which included the plan designed for Northport. It's into permitting now with the Corps of Engineers. Those funds for the engineering and those costs are not coming out of the $2 million that was promised, which is going to go entirely for the construction of the Northport section of the trail. The 60% plans should be due in about six weeks. And so it is moving forward, and I think it's moving forward in a positive way. As a commissioner, again, a promise made needs to be a promise kept. So I would definitely stay on this and make sure that it gets completed as promised. Can't hear you, Christine. I can't hear you.
I'm going to ask an easy question. What is your opinion on growth? What, if anything, should be done to stop or control it? So we're going to start with Alice, then Ron, then Chris on this one. Alice, you're first.
All right. I don't believe our current rate of growth is sustainable. I don't believe our current rate of growth is sustainable, either economically or environmentally. Especially after we recover from this virus pandemic, we can't afford to enter another summer of red tide. That not too long ago brought such devastation to the area. A former governor of Florida said back in the 1970s. That ecological destruction of Florida is nothing less than economic suicide. Yet we continue to put forth development plans into action that systematically are destroying our fragile environment. We can't tolerate to have wastewater inadequately treated or sewage spills occurring due to our facilities not being equipped to handle the additional demands that are being brought on by residential development. Growth and development is supposed to pay for its own way. Yet things like River Road is still a two lane road, which is what it was when I first moved here 30 years ago and there was nothing there but cow pastures. Why has development been approved and allowed to continue in that area without this road being upgraded? And why wasn't there enough money from the impact fees to finance it? This is what people are asking. Yes, I am pro environment, but that doesn't mean being anti-development. Development must be both economically and environmentally sustainable.
Hey, next, Ron, you have the question next.
Well, the truth is, this is a desirable place to live. And you know, that's why we live here. We love it here. And the reality is that people are going to move here. And I think maybe even more so. It's been, you know, we're trapped in our homes, but it's great to be here to get out into the sunshine and the beautiful area that we live in. So growth is healthy. Now, it needs to be managed growth. It needs to be carefully planned growth. I've been glad to see the direction that we've been moving in terms of planned communities where you have the walkable areas and you're bringing kind of a mixed use where you have goods and services and parks and recreation and those things in an area where you don't have to get in the car and drive and kind of the new, the new urbanism and the form-based development. So I think that's positive. I also think that we got to, we need to move away from having, you know, an area where we have just a huge section of single family homes and then across town, we have our commercial centers and things like that. I think there's some improvements to be done there and we need to move toward some multifamily and some additional housing types. But again, I think, I think we need to do growth, but it needs to be managed and needs to be controlled. Growth needs to pay its own way. But I think to say, we'll just stop it. That's, that's not something as a commissioner that I would agree with.
Hey. Chris, you're up next.
You know, this brings us back to the historic pillars of our economy. We're in an unprecedented time. We need to build trust in every aspect. And if you'd asked me this a couple of months ago, I probably would have answered a little differently. But right now, it's important to show flexibility and ingenuity. Trillions of dollars have been spent, trillions more about to be pumped into our infrastructure. We just don't know what any of that looks like yet. I mean, millions are about to be probably reachable that haven't been reachable by the county before. This crisis is putting our infrastructure at the forefront of national security from our roads to our bridges. Our plumbing under our streets, even our internet connectivity is being fast tracked. We're going to have to rebuild after this and I would never say we need to stop that. We are a nation built on the free market and that market will determine the control that the people want. It doesn't mean you don't have incentives or standards, but as a believer in Locke's philosophy of life, liberty and property. I think the more we force people and businesses to do what we want outside of the free market is pushing the borders of our very constitution. We have to rebuild. So coming out of this, we need to make sure we are embracing the free market, being flexible and innovative in our approach to get folks working again. Back to living their lives as normal as possible. So again, we got to look at tourism. Seniors through housing, healthcare and entertainment or hospitality. And I believe we need to be flexible and diversify our local economy, our employment and tax base through agriculture. Utilizing technology and the forward thinking of hydroponics to do so.
So we have a new question. So there's some, there's some data in this question. According to the county in fiscal year 2020. Sarasota County will spend $9,011,146 in budget to Health and Human Services, the 12th Judicial Court Administration and the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office for Mental Health and Supportive Services. Of the local mental health and supportive services, Sarasota County funds. The county's contribution represents 24% of the total $36,984,582 spent. The remaining funding is contributed by multiple partners, including federal and state grants, local film profit organizations, private donors and insurance. What is your position on the proposed mental healthcare district in Sarasota County? Would you create it? And what should it look like? And would you increase taxes to provide more money for the district? Now, before we answer the question, we had yesterday a county commission meeting where they decided to postpone this decision for at least until next year. So this will likely come up for one of you who will be elected to office next year. So it's a still very relevant question. The order for this question will be Alice, Chris, then Ron. Alice, you're up first.
Okay, I wonder if this was the question somebody asked for more time because that's a really involved question to answer in 90 seconds. But yes, I do believe a mental health care district in Sarasota County needs to be created. And just what and how those funds would be used should be determined by those who are the most knowledgeable in the field of mental health. Those experts agree that the focus should be more on early prevention instead of what is basically in place today and what is still being unfortunately suggested by the county commissioners. A stopgap approach of putting out fires, that is dealing with the situation when it becomes an emergency or crisis. That is the most common but most expensive approach, which seldom results in any real long lasting results. Programs for substance abuse, for example, should just be one component in the larger scope of providing for the healthy social well-being of people. When people and children can be empowered and taught the tools they need to know so they can be proactive when dealing with stressful situations. They'll be better equipped to avoid further trauma and that vicious expensive cycle that comes from only treating the symptoms. Investing in the healthy well-being of our residents today will reward us with people who are happy and productive members of society in Sarasota County.
Hey. Next, we have Chris. Chris, you're up.
Yeah, government's never efficient or cost effective. This discussion happened, as was mentioned, before the virus and recession. Listen, China is the leading source producer of almost every medicine we sell and they're withholding supplies. I mean, what does it look like when the mentally ill can't get to their meds or the sick and elderly? We have unprecedented job loss. What's our suicide and death rate look like in 60 days? If these meds aren't getting to people, jobs haven't come back, the folks that are on furloughed mortgages owe five to 10 grand on their next payment. I mean, this stuff is huge. We need to be supporting our churches and nonprofits. They've been doing this for thousands of years and they've been doing it well. Release the burden of restrictions, work with them, give them incentives at a fraction of the cost of the things that we're talking about. I mean, sometimes when a church can't bring a pot of chili to folks starving in a park because it wasn't government regulated, it's a little bit asinine. So let's talk trust now. Northport spends $3.5 million a year into a hospital taxing district that refuses to provide a reasonable level of service. They say we're friends, but when United Healthcare wanted to build, SMH did everything they could to hinder it. Don't, don't tell me you love me and then take my food from the table. Listen, building a coma is fine, but don't take my money and build a facility in Manatee County. You just can't tell me that it's right. So what we need to be doing is focus on the private sector and nonprofits. Support them, incentivize them, and then just get the heck out of the way.
Hey, and Ron, you get to finish this one off.
Well, I watched that hearing yesterday also, Christine, and I agreed with the decision to put that on pause. I had questions going in. I'm going to answer similarly to the CRA. I think you need to be careful about creating additional layers of government bureaucracy. I really wasn't sure what the plans were. I didn't have the time to really get into it for the mental health district. But generally speaking, I can tell you the principle that I would have is to, you know, again, not create a whole new district and increase taxes in a way that we don't understand exactly what they're going for, how they're going to be spent. I like the idea, very positive about partnering with the organizations like First Step Coastal Behavior, Harvest House, Catholic Charities, Jewish Family Services, Salvation Army and other really great mental health organizations and services that are doing the work. And how can we partner with them and how can we help them in accomplishing what they're doing? I know the sheriff's department has been very creative with the work they're doing, partnering with that. The Gulf Coast Community Foundation, providing funds for the navigators who are coming alongside people who are coming out of the jails. And not just warehousing people, but helping them solve the problem that got them there in the first place. So that's the direction I would take. But again, I think in a year as we take a look at it, maybe we'll get more information and I'd be able to make a better informed decision.
So the last question that I have for you before I get into a couple of my Argus questions and we, Argus member questions and we won't have time for all of them. Is transportation. Transportation is an important issue in Sarasota County. The county is coming up with a modern mobility plan. What do you think of eliminating SCAT routes in favor of modern mobility? And the answer order for this will be Chris, Ron, then Alice. Chris, you're up first.
Yeah, again, things have, things have changed. So I think we have to ask different questions now. Like what does our, our mobility look like after this? Everything we've seen, heard from our newspapers, radio, TV for weeks has constituted fear at the very least, extreme caution. I think our population is going to be a little bit paranoid for years. Will people want to even pack on a bus after this? How does this look beyond SCAT? Have we talked school system? Will folks be willing to put their kids on school buses? I mean, I've got kids. They're snotty and messy at times. I mean, how does that look? I think schools are going to have to be grappling with the same issue and the county and the school board need to come together on this and work through some of it. You can't honestly say you have the answer now. We just don't know the outliers. After all this, we must go back to the theme of trust, flexibility and ingenuity. We need to find that trust in our daily lives and in each other again. And that's going to take time. We need to be flexible, admit we don't have all the answers so we can open our eyes wide and begin seeing areas that we hadn't seen before. And we need to be innovative and have the ingenuity to allow the free market, private sector partnerships working through with us this thing. And we definitely don't need to be doing this as a government on our own, shutting anybody out, that's for sure.
Hey, Ron, you have the question next.
So I did go listen to the presentation made by the consultant that the county hired, the transpro people. They did a lot of good work and brought a lot of good information. And I think this is a step in the right direction. As I mentioned earlier, I think we're spending too much money on SCAT. And whenever you're going to lower costs and increase efficiency and give additional options, I'm very much in favor of that. They presented three options and the county decided to move with concept three that did allow for some partnership with some transportation networking companies. And, and I read into that probably companies like Uber and Lyft and others to provide first and last mile service and create some transportation hubs and save some money and create a little more efficient, more user friendly, more options to, to the public. So I would be very much in favor of that. And so I would support the move toward modern mobility. I believe that transportation is, there's going to be a sea change in the way we move around in coming years. And I think, you know, creating these transportation hubs and doing the modern mobility will help us move in that direction as those changes come. So yes, I would support the move toward modern mobility.
Hey, Alice.
Okay, I actually would not be in favor of eliminating the SCAT routes. I'm a big proponent of public transportation and as most people know, it's just terrible here in Florida. I think there's room for improvement and needs to be worked on and gathering information from the very people who utilize it. I actually had a difficult time getting some real specific details, excuse me, about the modern mobility plan. And that in itself concerned me because if I had a hard time finding out that information and locating it, I'm certain that, that someone who wasn't doing the forum like this would, would be able to do that. However, during that research, I did uncover the replacement of road impact fees with mobility fees. I don't know if this is part of that modern mobility plan. But those road impact fees were only set at about half of what they should have been as per yet another expensive impact fee study that never gets implemented. But it seems that the mobility fee would conveniently work out to be about the same as that one half road impact fee. So it just seems that that portion, if that's what it's, it's about, would just be another way to let developers off the hook of paying the true cost of the development by now giving a discounted fee a new name.
So that was it for the regular questions. I'm going to move on to some questions that are given to us by some of our Argus members when I asked for them. So I'm going to start with homelessness. How do you think the county is doing with the homelessness issue? What do you think the solution is? And for this one, it will be Ron, Alice, then Chris. Ron, you're up first.
So I had a chance to talk with Bill Spitler from the sheriff's office. And you know, I'm encouraged by the things that are being worked on. The homeless outreach team is doing a great job. They're having a lot of success. As I mentioned earlier, the Gulf Coast Community Foundation is funding the navigators who will follow people out of their time in jail and help them get relocated. The focus is not just on warehousing people, but it's going to be, it's going to be focused on helping them solve the issues that are causing the homelessness in the first place. And that's very positive. I think that's a good thing. Again, a lot of these things are associated with substance abuse issues and other mental health issues. And so we've got to, we've got to focus on that. And I think the sheriff is really doing a good job on that. They said out of, out of 500, I think it was 590 people that they dealt with last year, about 42% of them were willing to work with the department to get some housing and get some help. And that essentially all of them were successful, which is really amazing. So it's good to see some creative, unique ideas being put into practice in partnership with some great community service organizations. I've mentioned them already, First Step and Harvest House and others. Who are working together to make this a successful program.
Hey, Alice.
Yes, I think this goes back to creating that comprehensive plan for addressing the overall mental health issues we're dealing with by establishing that mental health care district. The county really needs to get serious about adopting what's considered to be a trauma-informed approach. That, that means understanding what has led to the behavior being exhibited, which was mentioned. And taking an approach that is more about prevention instead of building a facility that would just be a Band-Aid and treating the symptoms and not really the problem. Unfortunately, as areas become more urbanized, homelessness becomes more and more prevalent. And this is something else that should be acknowledged when we have development plans on the board and they're being considered. Because again, if development is to be financially sustainable, it has to be financially sustainable in all aspects. And that includes the costs that can be directly and indirectly attributed to development, including providing for the homeless.
Hang on a second. And Chris, you're up next.
All right, thank you. You know, I appreciate the care that folks show in areas like, like this, but as I mentioned before, government's not efficient or cost effective. We have organizations that have been caring for these issues without the bureaucratic tape since well before this country was established. Our churches carry these things and their mandate, it's in their scriptures. I mean, why should an agnostic government create another bureaucratic organization that'll cost taxpayers exponentially more with less effect? Than if we just supported organizations that exist for this very reason. Taking care of the homeless, feeding the hungry really isn't in government's purview. And when they step outside of what is their purpose, it isn't effective. Government shouldn't be doing it. It's mandate. Its sole purpose of creation was to protect the rights of those who should be doing it. If we would just do more of that, promote them, incentivize them, support the folks who have a heart for it. We would see this issue exponentially better within our area. And listen, the census for homelessness in Sarasota County was 1,135 back in January of last year. It's an important population that need help for a multitude of reasons. But we need to ensure that the amount of resources that our collective government spend remain in balance for the more than 400,000 other residents that reside in this county.
Okay, so let me ask this now. An Argus member submitted a question about consolidation of government. The Argus Foundation is always searching for ways to consolidate. The Argus Foundation is always searching for ways to consolidate government services in order to save taxpayer money and prevent redundancies in services. What government service, services do you think can be consolidated with another government? Name the other government and why you think this would be a good idea? And the order for this will be Ron, Chris, and Alice. Ron, you're up first.
Okay. Well, I was a little confused about the question because are you talking about state and county government? Are you talking about county and municipal government? And so obviously, I'm sorry, what?
It could be any level of government.
Okay.
County service with any other level of government.
So again, as a conservative, I'm always looking for opportunities to consolidate, to not have redundant services and to save time and money. So I think we can work together to identify some of those. I'll mention one, and I mean, there's probably be a lot of issues, but between, you know, county and state, I recently went through a process of building, an office building. And just on the environmental permitting, we had to go through SWIFTMUD, the Army Corps. We had to go through the DEP and then of course, we had to go through the county and they all reviewed the same plans. And it cost additional monies and it took, you know, one case just for the SWIFTMUD, I think it was, I don't remember, but it was just a long process, same with the Army Corps of Engineers. So if there's a way to consolidate that and save time and money, I'm definitely for it. That would be one example. I think in regard to county and municipalities, one of the things is an improved relationship between the counties, between the county and the municipalities will help identify issues where we can work together and maybe create some inter-local agreements to benefit both of us. As I said earlier, a strong Northport is a strong Sarasota County, a strong, then a strong Sarasota County. So I would love to see those consolidations and those efficiencies be surfaced.
Right. Chris.
Well, we find ourselves in this unique opportunity that will require governments to work together. We need to ensure a vibrant economic comeback will land the foundation for a strong economy for, for many years to come. I think in transportation, the cities, the county, the school board could consider pooling resources for the good of all citizens. I mean, if you think about the climate, the climate of social distancing probably isn't going to go away. The virus isn't going to be eradicated. It may be controlled to a degree like, like the flu. But I do think we need to have serious community discussions about duplications and how we can end them. I believe that after this threat's gone, we'll have a resurgence of community pride, neighbor helping neighbor. And government will have the opportunity to permanently take advantage of that, ensuring that where community nonprofits, churches, and service groups can fill those needs, that we can utilize that help, whether it's in talent or treasure and, and back the government out of these, these things that, that is inefficient. I mean, just back, just back them out as much as we can.
Hey, Alice.
Yes, I, I too wasn't really clear of what government services were being addressed. So I thought about it in terms of ordinances, how county ordinances and city ordinances can align with, with each other. And it's been my experience that municipalities will have inter-local agreements with the county when the services would provide to be, would prove to be too costly for them to replicate because of personnel required, because of equipment. But the objectives align with those in a county ordinance. Municipalities should insist on home rule though, that meaning that they want to determine the objectives they feel would work best in their municipality, which may not necessarily align with those in, in the county. And that should always be an option.
Okay. Well, you all answered that question relatively quickly. Can I squeeze one more in then? Squeeze one more in. And then it'll be the last question before your closing. So how do you feel, we're going to go back to the legacy trail again. How do you feel about a legacy trail going through existing industrial or business centers? Do you think we should move those businesses out and stop new ones from coming in that abut the right legacy trail? Should we stop existing businesses from expanding that abut the trail? So the order for this one will be Chris, Alice, then Ron. You're up first.
Thank you. One of the things voters were told about the legacy trail is that it would help mitigate traffic because people would drive their bikes to work. Traditionally, it's railroad corridors that are the commercial corridors of our community. I definitely don't think we, that we should be hasty. We should think long and hard before we make any blanket statements about reducing the areas where we can have commercial or light industrial. The county doesn't have much of it left, if any, outside of Northport. And listen, having the limitation up north would definitely help my district with more commercial building and entertainment in the broader tax space. But it's important that I look at this as a global plan to ensure that we don't pass laws that help one part of the county while hurting another. So I'd say, don't be hasty.
Okay. Alice, you're next.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be a great idea for the businesses to remain along the trail. And it would create, yes, another use for the trail. In fact, I think that even now, points of interest should be noted along the trail for cyclists to explore areas that are off the trail, such as at the Colonia Lane Crossing. People get off there and make their way to Nakoma's Groves for an ice cream, come back. I mean, that, that is just such a great idea. And Chris is right. I believe when the trail was first being proposed, the idea of it functioning as a component of an overall mobility plan was part of those thought processes that it should be utilized for purposes other than the ones that were strictly recreational in order to get, for people to get from one place to another. And bringing in new businesses along the trail would go a long way to help promote the need to have alternative ways of getting around other than by car. And the Pinellas Bike Trail that goes from Tarpon Springs to St. Pete is an excellent example of this. I've ridden that and you can go off and go into the little towns like Dunedin and get back on the trail. And it's just a terrific opportunity. So I do think the use of, of the trail should be expanded and it won't compromise its recreational value.
And Ron, you have the, and this one before we go to our closing statement.
So one of the things that won me over to be a spokesman for the trail was the exciting opportunity I saw for redevelopment and revitalization along the trail. So that's a huge positive. And I think we need to encourage and support businesses along the trail. I think it'd be a great opportunity. We're talking about how do we restart our economy after this crisis is over? I think that's going to be an attractive draw to bring companies and people here. So I would be very supportive of an exciting build out. You know, that corridor going behind Robarts Arena, the east-west corridor there, very exciting possibilities. I can imagine some of those, there's some surplus properties along the trail that could be used to create workforce housing. And we're talking about community to work, using the trail to commute to work. I mean, can you imagine having some affordable housing along the trail and then where the jobs are and the businesses are along the trail, being able to commute using the trail? So I just think we should be thinking along the lines of what can we do with this? How can we build out instead of thinking about moving businesses or people out of that area? Very positive, very exciting possibilities with the legacy trail.
Great. So now we're going to move, we've finished our questions. We're going to move on to the, the closing, any closings you have. You've got a minute each. And the order for this will be Alice, Chris, then Ron. So Alice, you're up first.
Okay. So what needs change? Well, I truly believe that elected officials need to serve all the people. And the members of the county commission need to be better diversified so this can happen. We need to protect the environment. We've had overdevelopment, sewage spills, mobility issues, and clear cutting for development that has led to the degradation of the Gulf waters and adversely affected our environment. That needs to change. We have to plan for the future. Tax dollars should be conserved to provide the maximum benefits for all the people. And again, being pro-environment doesn't mean being anti-development. But it does mean I recognize the importance of our environment as being our greatest asset. It's what drives our economy. Our quality of life needs to be protected. For over 100 years, people have come to Sarasota County and called it paradise. We need to make decisions that are both financially and environmentally sustainable so it can always be called that.
Right at one minute. Excellent. Okay. Then we have Chris.
As an overall theme, trust, flexibility, and ingenuity. Christine, I hope you and the folks watching this forum over the next few days will come from this meeting knowing that I'm someone that you can trust, who has the flexibility and ingenuity at his core. Those are the three things that it's going to take to get us out of this mess. Focusing on tourism, seniors through housing, hospitality, and healthcare, and agriculture, getting folks working again. It's going to gain trust, get them spending again. They're going to be flexible in their living. And that's going to cause them to freely create by the American spirit of ingenuity. That's what's always set us apart. The next four weeks are going to be critical for our country, but the next four years are going to be critical for our county. The decision you make today is going to determine the type of recovery that we have in the future. This week, I received the International Association of Firefighters Suncoast Local Endorsement. And I'm asking you, everyone watching, and the endorsement of Argus and its members, follow the firefighter's lead in endorsing and supporting my campaign for Sarasota County Commission. Thank you.
Okay. Just to be clear, the Argus Foundation does not endorse candidates as an organization. Just to make sure that that's clear.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
So then next we have Ron.
So I heard Mary Matlin say that elected office should be a calling, not a career. That's exactly the way I view it. I'm not a politician. I'm not looking for a job. I just see as a take, as an opportunity to take the experience, the knowledge I have of our community and the broad range of involvement that I've had and bring that to the county commission. Three guiding principles, keep it beautiful. I will champion all things quality of life, the beaches, the bays, our coastal waterways, our parks, our preserves. Never do anything to harm or compromise what makes us such an incredible place to live. Keep it vibrant. I believe in a strong and healthy economy. And then keep it fiscally sound. Of course, we will keep taxes low and I believe in accountability and transparency. May I say, I know I'm yellow, but Allison and I are praying daily for the well-being of everyone in our community, for our essential service workers, for our brave first responders, for our courageous healthcare professionals who are on the front lines of this fight. Thank you for your courage and thank you for your service. And thank you Christine and the Argus Foundation for the opportunity to participate in this forum.
So thank you all. I have to say, out of all the candidate forums that I participated in, both as a candidate and through the Argus Foundation, this has been the best. You all were, were excellent, very well prepared. We are very blessed to have three great candidates who are very involved in the community and have been for some time to choose from and for District Five. So District Five is very, very lucky. I hope each of you found this candidate forum to be fair and I hope that you enjoyed yourselves. And I'm glad we gave you the opportunity to get your message out. This is a challenging time with these elections are going to happen. So we need to start, everybody needs to start educating themselves on them. Please stay tuned for our Monday local government updates that we put out Monday mornings and check our website at argusfoundation.org for more information. My gratitude to all the candidates and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.